Everybody, please stand for the flag salute. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, February 6, 2024. The time is now 7:00 PM. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law in 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 7, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Patrako?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to skip around the agenda tonight. We have some special guests here, so we're going to put them at the beginning of our meeting. And at the very beginning, we're going to, we have the pleasure of having our new Assembly team here tonight. So we have Assemblyman Michael Venezia and Assemblywoman Carmen Morales. Assemblymen, Assemblywomen. Welcome to Nutley, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here this evening. It was very important for us to be present and to show our face and to let you all know that we stand behind Nutley down in the State House. I am an educator. I used to be a preschool teacher, kindergarten teacher, vice principal, principal, currently Director of Curriculum Instruction at the Essex County Schools of Technology. We accept students from all over Essex County, including Nutley. And I can say that we are one of the best schools in the county. So again, I sit on the Education Committee down in the State House, as well as the Commerce, Economic Development, and Agriculture Committee down in the State House. So anything that you all need, please reach out to my office. We are in Franklin, 152 Franklin Street in Belleville. I live in Belleville, New Jersey, which is right next door, and it is my pleasure just to be here this evening, introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners, for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure. You know, I'm a Bloomfield guy, but I won't let the rivalry with Bloomfield and Nutley get in the way now that I'm serving Nutley as well. My wife is from Nutley, so I get that, and my in-laws still live here. But I'm very excited to be here, to be serving Nutley in the 34th District. Right now, I'm actually working out of the Belleville office with Carmen before my official office gets open. But if anybody needs to reach me, my email address is asmvenezianjledge.org. But I'm very excited to be here. I'm serving on the Budget and Judiciary Committee down in Trenton. But we're here for Nutley, whatever you guys need, and I look forward to the next two years, and hopefully a lot longer than that. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here this evening. It's a pleasure meeting you, not that we haven't met before, and not that I don't know you for many, many years. But we welcome you here to Nutley. We look forward to working with you. I'm sure we'll have a lot of issues that we'll be addressing that you could help us with, and I'm sure we're going to have a great old time. Thank you so much.
We spoke before the meeting. I'll just echo Commissioner Tucci and just add my own one. Congratulations to both of you. It seems like you're sitting on committees that are very important and also very important for Nutley specifically, given all the challenges that we face. So I will just advance Commissioner Tucci's comment to say we will definitely be in touch. Okay, glad you're here. Thank you.
I'd just like to also congratulate both of you. I know both of you, and I'm sure you'll do a great job for everyone you represent, and especially our Nutley residents. So welcome aboard. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to echo everyone's sentiments already expressed, and I'd like to thank you guys for taking this step and coming here and introducing yourselves, and I'm looking forward to the working relationship that we're going to have in the future going forward. Thank you.
Assemblywoman, Assemblymen, thank you very much for coming tonight. We don't want to hold you up. We know you have other places you have to be, but we do appreciate you being here tonight. So thank you very much. And so to further skip around, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Tucci. You have some other special guests.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. This evening, on behalf of the Nutley Board of Commissioners, I have the pleasure of offering a resolution, recognizing all of our honorees for the 2024 Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade. But before I get into that, I'd like to tell everyone who doesn't already know, I see our president's on the left-hand side, smiling back there behind Frank. The Nutley Irish American Association is one of the premier organizations, not only in the township of Nutley, but in the state of New Jersey. All right. So before I go any further, what I'd like to do is recognize all of the officers, because the countless hours that you folks put in and the dedication and commitment that you have to this township and to others outside this township that need help is so unbelievable that people need to know who the people are that are steering this ship. First, I'd like to introduce our President, Deidre Hollywood. Deidre's on the left. Our Vice President, Shane McCafferty. Is Shane here? Sure he's here in spirit. Legal counsel, one of the classiest guys in the entire township of Nutley, Frank Costinbader. The Treasurer, Brenda Sherman. Brenda's no stranger to any of us here. Corresponding Secretary, Colleen Nielsen. Recording Secretary, Ellen Bennett. She's actually here. Our Chaplain, Father Tom. And all of, I'm sure he'll hear about this, and all of the trustees. Some of the great things that this organization does, in addition to one of the best parades in the entire country, all right, are they provide scholarships, all right, to school seniors, Nutley High School seniors, and last year alone donated $11,000 to worthy recipients. They were absolutely involved right from the beginning in our Rally for Hope, which was formerly the Relay for Life, and they continue to participate under the banner of the Greater Nutley Cancer Foundation, and we thank you for that, another outstanding organization. Nutley VFW, they're totally involved in everything that goes on there and everything, supporting veterans. Nutley Family Service Bureau, the Food Bank, the Nutley Chamber of Commerce, St. Mary's Church, other Nutley organizations, because they have no rivals, all right? They are in sync with each and every organization in this township and look to help everyone. The Nutley Music Boosters, the Nutley Theatrical Society, Project Graduations, Irish organizations, again, throughout the state of New Jersey, and they also support the New Jersey Irish Festival. So this is not a group that is very parochial and is centered just on Nutley. Nutley is absolutely their priority, but the things that they do reach far, far beyond Nutley. So having said that and giving you a flavor of what this group and what the people involved in it are all about, I offer this resolution on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Whereas on Saturday, March 7, 2024, the Nutley Irish American Association held its 40, will hold its 45th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade to celebrate the legend and spirit of St. Patrick, which is a fun-filled, good old-fashioned parade and promotes an atmosphere of benevolence, friendship, and community spirit. Whereas St. Patrick's Day honors the cultural traditions of the Irish, but also the historic American commitment to embrace the multifaceted traditions of all immigrant people who have come to our shores. Whereas the Nutley Irish American Association celebrated its annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, Grand Marshall Dinner on Saturday, February 3, 2024, at the Brownstone in Patterson, New Jersey. And whereas this year's outstanding Grand Marshal is Detective Captain Robert Irwin. Rob, please stand up. Our Deputy Grand Marshal, who I have coined Irish royalty, Maureen Callahan, please stand, Maureen. Our Parade Queen, Tara Catherine Reed. Glad you made it back from California. Our Member of the Year, Barbara O'Halloran. And our Firefighter of the Year, Lieutenant Gabriel Miller. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate the honorees as they are here this evening. I so proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm going to vote aye, but before I do, I do want to say a few words. I'm a proud member of the Nutley Irish American Organization, and I'm proud not only because of the hard work that the officers do, as Commissioner Tucci described, but I'm proud by the slate of dignitaries that they put forth. Lieutenant Miller and Captain Irwin. You guys are first responders, and you guys get paid for, not for what you do, but for what you're willing to do. And you're great examples and representing the fire department and police force, and we can't thank you enough, and you are great examples to be leading our parade. Tara Reed, like I told you on Saturday, your resume is extremely impressive, and you put all five of us on this to stay ashamed of your resume, and you're another fine example of Irish heritage. And then Barbara, I think you being selected as Member of the Year in front of this entire great organization, which is so great, is just a testament to just how great you are that you are selected from among the many great members to be the Member of the Year. And so you do so much work for the community in terms of raising money for cancer and everything. There just cannot be enough said about you and the work you do, both within and without the organization. And lastly, well, not lastly, I have two Grand Marshals. Maureen, your resume is equally impressive as everyone that I just mentioned, and your work with special needs individuals cannot be understated. That's a group that needs advocacy and it needs people like you, who it's a labor of love, who care for them and provide for them. And lastly, our Grand Marshal, I am looking forward to you leading us down the avenue on March 2 for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And I tell everyone, the Christmas Day of the St. Patrick's Day season is the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade, but the Christmas Eve is the pub crawl the weekend before. So I'm looking forward to having a drink with you and all the dignitaries on the pub crawl. So I proudly vote aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. I also think that Commissioner Kelly has a green suit that could be rented for the event that day. I definitely vote aye. I would just add to the comments, and you're going to hear a lot. But instead of speaking to you individually, because you're all accomplished, and you all should be very, very proud. I think what's important about all of this tonight, and it's important because the type of community Nutley needs to be, needs to remain, and actually needs to become is renewed by your efforts of organizations like yours. So you are part of the fabric of the community, and I encourage you strongly to continue to do what you do so well. Because it's an extension, actually, of what I believe would be the desire of the entire Board of Commissioners, is that we're united as, in effect, as one to continue to re- protect our town, to contribute to its success, to build on its future and recognize that we face many challenges and opportunities, but organizations like yours give me a lot of faith that we, as a community, will not just survive, but we will rise. And so I congratulate all of you, and I look forward to the parade. I'm not sure I can keep up with you on the pub thing, but I'll try. Again, I vote aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Yes, I vote aye too. I'd like to congratulate everyone also. It's great to honor people from Public Safety, too. Rob was an unbelievable police officer, dear friend, and you know, you couldn't pick a better person to lead the parade. Gabe Miller, you know, coming up. I don't even know how long you've been there, Gabe, five years, but to make the rank of Lieutenant already, you know, a stellar employee to everybody else, you know. Like John said, your resumes speak for yourself, so I'd like to congratulate you. I like to say that it's my favorite day of the year, the parade. I've learned to do one thing always is to make sure I get a ride down here and a ride back, because after doing these crawls and drinking all day, it's really a celebration that's second to none in Nutley, so I congratulate the Nutley Irish on. But now the great parade somehow, no matter what, through all the years, if we have snowstorms three days before, the mayor gets those roads cleaned up, and for some odd reason, like they say, the sun shines on the Irish that day. So congratulations to all of you.
Is that aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci?
I'm not going to say anymore. I think I've said enough between my comments at the dinner, which was outstanding once again, and my comments this evening. It's just a great organization. I'm very proud to be a member. I'm very proud that you accepted me as one of your own, and I hope to do this with you for many, many more years. Congratulations, aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Congratulations to all the honorees, the trustees, and all the officers. You guys have put on a great event the other night. We look forward to having a great parade, and I'm going to follow Commissioner Patrako around after the parade, and so you all have a great time, and thank you, and congratulations for everything you do.
Would all the honorees like to please come up for a picture?
Congratulations, everybody. We'll give you a couple of minutes unless you want to stick around and be bored for another hour. Oh. Play tomorrow. Couple minutes, we're going to move to minutes. Tucci comes back. Madam Clerk, you want to move on to minutes?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for January 2, 2024.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Counsel, can I read all of them together?
Yes.
Okay. We have three applications for a social affair permit. The first one is the Nutley Elks Lodge for St. Patrick's Day Parade Celebration for Saturday, March 2, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM at 2:42 Chestnut Street. Now, the Irish American Alliance, St. Patrick's Day Parade Celebration, Saturday, March 2, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Location is 44 Park Avenue. And the third one, application for social affair, is the Van Riper House. It is their third annual lawn party fundraiser on Saturday, April 20, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, with a rain date of Saturday, April 27, and their location is 491 River Road. The rest of the communications are for, the first one is Luna Wood Fire Tavern, submitting an application for an extension of premises for their St. Patrick's Day event scheduled for Saturday, March 2, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 2:23 Franklin Avenue. The Nutley Irish American Alliance has submitted an event application to hold their 45th St. Patrick's Day Parade along Franklin Avenue between Harrison Street and Chestnut Street on Saturday, March 2, 2024, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The Van Riper House has submitted an event application to hold a lawn party fundraiser on Saturday, April 20, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM at 491 River Road, with the rain date of Saturday, April 27. The Nutley Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application for their 24th Annual Nutley 5K Run and Walk, scheduled for Saturday, May, sorry, Sunday, May 5, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, starting and finishing at the Nutley High School Park Oval. Commissioner Tucci has submitted an event application for a street concert to take place on Franklin Avenue between Chestnut Street and William Street on Thursday, June 27, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Nutley Belleville Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, March 3, 2024, at 44 Park Avenue between the hours of 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. And Holy Family Church has submitted an event application to hold a Palm Sunday Religious Procession from 174 Franklin Avenue to 28 Brookline Avenue on Sunday, March 24, 2024, from 11:20 AM to 12:00 PM.
Move all of them.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Reports, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a code enforcement report for the fourth quarter 2023 and the annual report for Revenue and Finance.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a shade report for the month of January 2024.
Move on to bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for February 6, 2024. Public Affairs, $81,000. Revenue and Finance, $7,906,047.28. Public Safety, $23,197.15. Public Works, zero. Parks and Public Property, $738,167.12. Water Utility, $36,610.31. Payroll as of January 19, 2024, regular payroll total, $1,127,462.79. Overtime payroll total, $66,130.46. Total payroll, $1,193,593.25 for a grant total of $9,978,615.11.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Two public comments on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concern should approach the microphone and provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioner on agenda items only?
Hi, Lisa Johnson, 30 Sherwood Lane. I wanted to bring up the Green Acres application. I looked on the website, and there wasn't a environmental impact assessment. Do you know if that will be posted tomorrow? And the application's putting in, being put in tomorrow? I know that area is flagged as a heat island, and I'm wondering if, because the proposal's including synthetic turf, if you're going to increase the amount of tree canopy in the area to offset the heat island effect, that's a possibility. And if not, maybe that's something to consider for the application, because it is a DEP map that they do heat island assessment.
Right. And as I'm sure Frank just told you, everything will be available as of tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And as far as the tree canopy is concerned, that's an ongoing work in progress for us. We increase that budget just about every year and plant more and more, and especially in instances where we're looking to reduce maintenance costs, all right, by moving to the turf, we take that into account and we compensate with planting.
Yeah, just keep in mind that the turf gets really hot, and I'm thinking about the student athletes, that if you increase the canopy, it will help with the mitigation for the heat.
Yes, well aware. We have two fields already, and we look forward to this third one. But thank you for your comment. Much appreciated.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing them, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Some of you may or may not be aware of this, but I just want to remind everyone once again. On Friday, February 1, we had our blast off for our Rally for Hope. All right. And for those of you who don't know what the Rally for Hope is, the Rally for Hope is the replacement for what we previously called the Relay for Life. We've changed our, not only the name of the activity and the event, all right, but we've also changed the structure. All right. And by doing that, I mean, what we did was we created, with the good help of our township attorney and his private law office, who did some pro bono work for us, we created the Greater Nutley Cancer Foundation, which is a state-registered 501(c)(3), all right? And we will have much more direction and much more oversight as to where the money goes and how the money goes. Now, some of you may be saying, well, why the change? All right. And very simple. Like everything else in life, conditions change, and running this type of event for the last 17 years, we have become pretty good at it. And when I say we, I mean the committee that actually does the work and the support provided by the Parks Department. Large organizations like the American Cancer Society also change with time, and sometimes that change enhances the outcomes for certain organizations and not so much for others. All right. We were at a point where our missions and our intentions were similar, but the way we accomplished our goals and directed our resources were beginning to differ. Hence, we decided to establish the 501(c)(3). We created a Board of Directors. We established a mission statement, and we are legally registered with the state of New Jersey. And again, why? Well, because for the past seven And again, why? Well, because for the past seventeen years, we've collectively raised over one point five million dollars. Lot of money for a small town like Nutley. Previous organization we were affiliated with earmarked seventy-three cents of every dollar to clients and twenty-seven percent per administration. Under the new organization, one hundred percent of the money will go to clients and patients who are in need and research, and there will be zero administrative fee. We'll be able to direct through an application process exactly where the money will go, and our priorities will be Nutley Family and Friends. Uh, the dollar distributions and the application process, uh, is a work in progress and will be announced at a later date. And a percentage of the dollars raised, as I mentioned before, because it's very important, will be dedicated to resource, research, because research saved the lives of, at the very least, a few of our board members and countless others. The mission statement of the Greater Nutley Cancer Foundation is as such. It's a nonprofit organization that fundraises through local community events, supporting cancer survivors in Nutley and surrounding areas by providing financial assistance to cancer survivors and annual donations to cancer research. Now, we will always know where our money goes, and we will control our own destiny. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to say that if anybody is still interested in, um, signing up for our Neighborhood Watch, we kicked off a couple of weeks ago. We had a, um, a crowd at Public Safety, which next time we might have to move the meeting over here. I want to thank the Mayor and Commissioner Tucci for, um, coming by to the, um, we are on the town website. If you have any questions, you could call the Police Department, or I would ask for the Chief's Office, and please, the more eyes that we have on the street and that we partner with our residents, it'll be a safer Nutley. Our guys are working through tonight. We're changing shifts around to stop what's going on in town. Unfortunately, it's going on in any town, but the Neighborhood Watch has so far been a really, really huge success with a lot of members, and we're, we're looking to get as many as we can. So if you're interested, please contact me, Sam Correll, or the Police Department directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of events, uh, going on this month. The, the first one I, I want to talk about is from February eleventh. The week of February eleventh is, uh, random act of, random acts of kindness week. Uh, so if you're sitting in traffic and you're getting really annoyed, maybe let someone in, uh, don't try and keep them out, uh, pay things forward, uh, and, and send, and send your good out into the world, uh, and, uh, it'll, it'll come back in tenfold in, in dividends. Uh, February is also, uh, Har- Heart Health Month, and we have two events on this month, uh, instead of the usual one event. Uh, this Saturday, uh, we're going to be at the Jersey Axe House for, uh, a heart healthy event to get the blood flowing and throw some axes at some, some wood. Uh, it's, it's by registration only. It's, it's mostly full by now, but there are a few spots left, so if you're interested in that heart healthy event, uh, there have been, uh, registration emails going out, or you can call the Health Department for registration. Also, in, in furtherance of Heart Healthy Month, we're going to have our, our annual Heart Health Walk, uh, followed by some, some yoga stretches led by Jen, Jenissimo. Uh, and, uh, later on this evening, uh, the Mayor, on, on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, is sponsoring a resolution for Black History Month, and, and we'll be having a, a lunch and learn at the Health Department. Uh, look out, eh, for more information regarding that. And just as a read ahead, uh, March is Women's History Month, and just as we did last year, we're going to have a number of events to celebrate women's history. Uh, so be on the lookout for more information regarding Women's History Month next month.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, this Saturday, we'll be having our electronic recycling event in, uh, parking lots seven and nine. Uh, for those of you buying your new big screen to watch Taylor Swift on Sunday, uh, you can, uh, take your old TV and turn it in. And, uh, we'll also be having the, uh, Winter Farmers Market on, uh, February eighteenth at the, uh, Vincent Methodist Church. So those are two events we have coming up. Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as I promised, uh, we, uh, and when I say we, I mean, the, the entire Board of Commissioners have been working diligently on getting this, uh, this, uh, Hometown Hero Program, uh, up and off the ground. Uh, and so this is, uh, an ordinance to add Chapter four fifty-eight Municipal Military Banner Program to the Township Code. Uh, and I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertising Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at a second reading on March fifth, twenty twenty-four. So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, John, John, just, just, uh, I forgot to call you, but I think it says on polls throughout the town. I think I wanted to add the word appropriate polls, because they can't fit on all of them. That's all.
Right, right.
Clarification. All right, so, uh, uh, aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Let's move on to ordinance, uh, second reading and public hearings. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have filed a, uh, an application, uh, to turf the girls softball field at, uh, Father Glotzback Park, um, the Green Acres, and as part of that process, uh, we need to hold a public hearing. Uh, so basically what this is, is this is a public hearing on the submission of a twenty twenty-four New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Urban Parks Grant Program Application. And in the application, the Township is seeking funding through the State of New Jersey Urban Parks Program and the Green Acres Programs, two different separate programs, for improvements at, at Glotzback Memorial Park located on Park Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. Township proposes the installation of synthetic turf on the tennis court, uh, that's not the tennis courts, on the softball field at Glotzback Memorial Park to enhance playability. A concept plan showing the proposed changes, a preliminary cost estimate, and an environmental impact assessment for the project can be found at www.nutleynj.org slash Glotzback Park Upgrades. Additionally, for more information regarding Green Acres application, you can visit, uh, D, HTTPS double slash DEP dot NJ gov slash WP content slash upload slash green acres slash PDF slash twenty twenty-four urban parks dash application local dash gov PDF. It's, uh, quite a mouthful, but if you need it, I'm sure we'll have it available on the website. Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, as required, we're holding this public hearing today, February sixth, twenty twenty-four, during our regularly scheduled meeting. And, uh, we, we, uh, encourage and appreciate any comments that anyone may have this evening.
Anybody like to be heard on the submission of the twenty twenty-four New Jersey DEP Green Acres Urban Parks Grant? Seeing no one, Commissioner?
Yes, I move we, uh, close the public hearing?
I need a second. So you, Commissioner Kelly? Say a second, thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Uh, be, I vote, I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor, if I might, can I offer the resolution at this time?
Sure.
Whereas Township of Nutley, through Department of Parks and Public Property, has identified the need to make improvements to municipal plaza. Nope, wrong one. Hold on. Let's hold that. Let's hold that for later. I'm all done at this point. Thank you.
Do we have to move the ordinance?
Let's move the ordinance. I move it?
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have ordinance number three five four two, and I'm in an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter two two eight, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article seven, Special Zones and Areas, Section twenty-nine A, entitled Handicap Parking to Add to the Location Set forth Therefore. Um, this is for sixty-nine Ra- Race Street. Race Street, it's a, um, handicap parking spot.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three five four two? Seeing no one?
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
All right, move the ordinance. Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, thirty-five forty-three, uh, public hearing for a, a replacement vehicle for the Health Department, uh, for a vehicle that was a total loss as a result of being hit by a tree during, uh, a recent storm.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three five four three? Seeing no one?
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. I see Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Evans do not have any resolutions tonight, so I'll move to Commissioner Petracca.
Okay. I can find them. Four, three? Okay. I have, um, Resolution twenty twenty-four be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County versus um, State of New Jersey, that Samuel Malchell of the Police Department and Nutley Police Department be granted a leave of absence without pay effective February eleventh, two thousand twenty-four through May eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay, my second one, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that the, in accordance with the provisions of RS forty A four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in two thousand twenty-three budget be inherent or the same hereby authorized and approved from police salary and wage, five thousand dollars to municipal court E-ticket program from fire, fire salary, um, eighteen thousand to gasoline, eighteen thousand, total twenty-three thousand. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay, my final one, I believe. Sorry for the mix-up. Um, number nineteen, um, dash twenty-four Resolution authorizing Township of Nutley Office of Emergency Management to accept funds from a sub grant award of the Federal Fiscal Year two thousand three of Emergency Management Agency Assistant Program Funding and for the Chief Financial Officer of the Township of Nutley to amend the budget and certify the available, availability of funds. I'll move it as written. My move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, my first resolution this evening is number fifteen dash twenty-four. It's the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Enabling Resolution. Whereas New Jersey DEP Green Acres Program provides grants and/or loans to municipal and county governments and grants to nonprofit organizations for assistance in the acquisition, development, stewardship of lands for outdoor recreation and conservation purposes. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining funding in the amount of one million, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ten dollars in the form of a zero-dollar matching grant, and if available, a zero-dollar loan from the state to fund the following projects. Glotzback Memorial Park Improvement Project at a cost of one million, two ten, four hundred and ten dollars. Whereas the state shall determine if the application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the Green Acres Program and notify the applicant of the amount of the funding award. Whereas the applicant is willing to use the state funds in accordance with such rules, regulations, and applicable statutes, and is willing to enter into an agreement with the state for the above-named project. Now, therefore be it resolved to the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners resolve that Joseph G. Scarpelli or the successor to the Office of Mayor is hereby authorized to A, make an application for such a loan and/or such a grant, B, provide additional application information and furnish such documents as may be required, and C, act as the authorized correspondent of the above-named applicant. Two, that the applicant has its matching share of this project. If a match is required, there is no match, so there's no, nothing that needs to be available. That in the event the state's funds are less than the total projects or specified above, the applicant has the balance of funding necessary to complete the project. Four, that the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in its performance of the project. And five, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
My second resolution this evening is also, um, related to this project. Township of Nutley Green Acres Enabling Resolution. Whereas the New Jersey DEP Green Acres Program is providing grants through the Urban Parks Initiative, and whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining funding in the amount of one million, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ten dollars from the state to fund the following project, Glotzback Memorial Park Improvement Project at the same cost. Whereas the state shall determine if the application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the Urban Parks Initiative and notify the applicant of the amount of the funding award. And whereas the applicant is willing to use the state funds in accordance with applicable policies and laws and is willing to enter into agreement with the state for the above-named project. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Mayor of the Township of Nutley or the successor to the Office of Mayor is hereby authorized to A, make application for such a loan and/or grant, B, provide additional application information and furnish such documents as may be required, C, act as the authorized correspondent of the above-named applicant. Two, in the event the state funds are less than the total project cost specified above, the applicant has the balance of funding necessary to complete the project. Three, the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, regulations in its performance of the project. And four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances, family had, families had to cancel participation programs offered. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amount listed below. For seventy-one Quarry Street for girls lacrosse in the amount of one hundred and ten dollars for the twenty twenty-four year. One nineteen Conover Avenue for basketball program in the amount of two hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-four year. One twenty-eight Stratford Drive for the girls lacrosse in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the twenty twenty-four year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that in accordance to a provision of RS forty A colon four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in the twenty twenty-three budget be and same are hereby authorized and approved from health insurance in the amount of five thousand dollars to shade trees salary and wages in the amount of five thousand dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA fifty-two colon thirty-four dash six point two, C one thirty-nine, made by resolution and without advertising for bids, purchase goods or services using the New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance has been developed utilizing competitive bidding process by another contracting unit within the State of New Jersey when available. And whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property intends to upgrade the tennis courts at Owens Park, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property will create six pickleball courts and two tennis courts at Owens Park. And whereas the Township of Nutley previously passed Resolution number two sixty-nine dash twenty-three awarding the within agreement, and whereas the Township of Nutley is amending Resolution two sixty-nine dash twenty-three to accurately reflect amendments that were subsequently made to the agreement. And whereas AT&amp;T Sports one fifteen B Cross Keys Road, Berlin, New Jersey, has provided an updated quote in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. And whereas the cost of design permitting and construction of the improvements for Monsignor Owens Field Tennis Courts will be supported by capital ordinance thirty-five twenty-four C for the entirety of the project cost. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that a contract for the upgrade to the tennis courts at Owens Field be awarded to AT&amp;T Sports one fifteen B Cross Keys, Berlin, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Commissioner Kelly?
Looking forward to playing some pickleball. Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Got a question early.
Commissioner Petracca?
My kids are already playing, and I'm anxious to maybe have a match against you, Commissioner Kelly. I vote aye, too.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
All right, my last resolution this evening. I created a bit of confusion before.
I'd be excited to see that matchup.
Maybe we should have a little fundraiser for a good organization in Nutley. Maybe you, you could join in, too.
No, I'll pass.
All right, whereas the Township of Nutley, through Department of Parks and Public Property, has identified the need to make improvements, Municipal Plaza located at one Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. That's right. has identified the need to make improvements municipal plaza located at one Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. That's right in front of this building. And whereas the Township wishes to solicit bids as a fair and open process pursuant to the provisions of NJ SA nineteen colon forty-four A dash twenty point five. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that sealed bids for the proposed improvements to municipal plaza located at one Kennedy Drive shall be due on Wednesday, March sixth, twenty twenty-four at eleven AM. Addressed to the municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, one Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. At which time they will be publicly open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
It's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have received from the organizations listed below. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with provisions of RS forty A four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriation in the twenty twenty-three budget be and the same are hereby authorized and approved from purchase of water account number three oh five, seven oh three, two sixty-one, fifty thousand dollars, and purchase of water three oh five, seven oh four, two hundred and sixty-one. Go-to purchase of water, three oh five, seven oh five, two sixty-one, a total of a hundred thousand. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain professional services of DMR architects to provide architectural planning and architectural consulting services related to the ongoing development of the Franklin Avenue redevelopment project. Whereas this contract is awarded without competitive bidding as a professional service. And according with NJ SA nineteen forty-four A twenty point five of the local public contract law, because the contract is a professional services. And whereas the Board of Commission has determined that DMR located at seven, seven, seven Terrace Avenue, Hasbro Heights, New Jersey is qualified and best suited to provide the services to the Township of Nutley. Whereas DMR has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that has not made any reportable disqualifying contribution to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year. And that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available from account number four oh one, two, two, six, two oh five and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution and or will be reimbursed by escrow account set up by the redeveloper of the subject property. And whereas DMR has submitted a proposal for the services to perform the services at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And whereas the anticipated term of the contract is for twelve months from January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Now they will be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into contract with DMRs professional services in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and a notice with accordance of local public contract laws of the state of New Jersey shall be published in Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to retain professional services, DMR architects to provide architectural planning and architectural consulting services related to the ongoing redevelopment of Poplar La Roche on three campus. Whereas this contract is awarded without competitive bid as a professional service in accordance with NJ SA nineteen forty-four twenty point five of a local public contract law because the contract is a professional services. Whereas Board of Commission has determined that DMR located at seven, seven, seven Terrace Avenue, Hasbro Heights, New Jersey is qualified and best suited to provide the services of the Township of Nutley. Whereas DMR has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies it's not made any reportable disqualified contributions to a political or candidate committee in Township of Nutley in the previous one year. And that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas funds are available from account number four oh one, two, two, six, two oh five. We certify the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution and or will be reimbursed by escrow account set up by the redevelop for the subject property. Whereas DMR submitted a proposal for the service in accordance with the proposal will perform the service at a cost not to exceed seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Whereas the anticipated term of the contract is for twelve months, January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And now therefore resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with DMRs professional services in the amount of not to exceed seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. And a copy of this resolution, as well as the contact, contract shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley in notice with accordance with the local public contracts laws of state of New Jersey and be published in Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas bids for the twenty twenty-three acceptance of a recycling vegetative waste include leaf and grass clippings were received and opened on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas initial one-term contract was awarded from February seventh, twenty twenty-three with an option for two one-year extensions at the same price. And they would agree upon pre-stated increase in subject to availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget. Whereas the term of this first optional contract extension shall be utilized for one contract beginning February seventh, twenty twenty-four through February sixth, twenty twenty-five, subject to the availability availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget. Whereas the funds are available from account number four oh one, four, two, two, two oh nine for the term of February seventh, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, subject to the adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget. Whereas the funds are available from account number five oh one, four, two, two, two oh nine for the term of January first, twenty twenty-five through February sixth, twenty twenty-five, now five thousand, subject to the adoption of the twenty twenty-five municipal budget and certified by the Chief Funds Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that a contract be awarded to Esprit Tully Sons not to exceed eighty thousand dollars and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. This resolution is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Commissioners, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley honors the heritage of African Americans and acknowledges their many contributions to our nation, our state, and our township. And whereas the origin of Black History Month began in nineteen fifteen, half a century after the Thirteenth Amendment abolished slavery in the United States and grew out of Negro History Week, the creation of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African Americans. And whereas the Civil Rights Movement and a growing awareness of black identity, Black History Month or National African American History Month evolved to an annual celebration of achievements by black Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of African Americans in U.S. history. Whereas the contributions of African Americans from all walks of life and their endeavors to learn and thrive throughout history and make unforgettable marks in our nation as artists, scientists, educators, influential thinkers, members of the faith community, athletes, and political and governmental leaders reflects the greatness of the United States. And whereas remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead and the time to acknowledge the courageous fight for the rights, liberties, and freedoms for all Americans, the Township of Nutley observes and honors Black History Month and encourages educators, students, and families to learn about the heritage and achievements of African Americans through appropriate programs. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, joined with the citizens of Nutley, to observe and honor Black History Month and recognize the tremendous contributions made by African Americans. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. What name, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name for the record unless further time is granted by the board. Each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Maria Baza, two oh nine Highfield Lane. I guess this is for Commissioner Evans. I was I came to pay my taxes on the first and I was given a packet of a pen and a clip and a pad. Can you tell me how much they cost the town? And why we're doing that?
We always give them out. They just decided that with most.
I can't hear you.
We've been giving them out and they didn't cost a lot of money because we get the advertising with the promotion ones are seventy-five cents, sixty cents. You know, those types of things. They're not expensive. But the, the, the fact that we have them, it was just putting, making them visible so that people come in and take them.
I'm really having a difficult time hearing you, but you said they were sixty cents. Is that what?
Yeah, I'm saying they're not expensive. They're, they're.
Yeah, but still, what's, you know, I know this is an election year. Is that the reason?
Absolutely not. Ben, we've had them for a long time. It just, we've been putting them out and putting them in different areas. And so we put them out. We just found another place to put them.
Yeah, but it's sixty cents. We don't need to spend. These are tough times.
I appreciate your comment.
Okay.
Everybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Sir Bruno, do we have a need for an executive session?
We do, Mayor. We need to discuss litigation and contract negotiation.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Thank you. Whereas Section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into close executive session to discuss litigation and contract negotiations. Be it for the result that at a time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly?[1777.88]